Good evening. Today is Thursday, May 11th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in our audience tonight and for anyone who may be watching online. Director Masal, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. First on this evening's agenda, we will receive a report about Pathways' progress from Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Dr. Kathy Funston, Director of Strategic Partnerships and Pathways. Welcome to you both.
Board Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to share an update on the implementation of the district pathways programming. Tonight, Dr. Funston and I will be providing you with the following information. We'll be re-grounding ourselves into the district pathways vision, take a look at program alignment across the district, take a look and listen to some of the impacts that the program has had on our students, and a look at what is yet to come in the pathways expansion.
Chair Hume, Directors of the Board, Dr. Battle. Our pathways, starting with our high school pathway seven years ago, and more recently with our K-8 pathways, is absolutely grounded in our school board directions. We are looking to create opportunities and access for all of our students to innovative, creative programming that aligns with our economic data and the needs of our community, and then also to bring in the stakeholder voice that is so critical for all improvement by soliciting student voice, family voice, our community voice, your voice, in making those changes and improvements that we will be presenting to you tonight. Pathways, as you know, do not happen in isolation. There is an intersectionality of partnership that is absolutely critical. And this intersectionality includes braiding multiple resources from various sources. It includes bringing in our post-secondary partners, our community partners, our business partners, really looking and partnering with our in-district programs and our own staff and tapping into the talents that we have in our district to create new and creative opportunities for our students. And also, everything leading to those terminal courses at the high school, the Burnsville High School pathways, because this is where our students are going to get those early college credits, those industry and many times stackable industry certifications that prepares them for their plans after Burnsville High School and their education in our system.
These next four slides will demonstrate part of our K-12 alignment of programming under the four high school career pathways. Rachel Lucius, our pathways coordinator, has created this view of opportunities students currently have available in K-8 to explore and participate in pathways programming. For each pathway, she has identified the learning opportunities embedded in the core curriculum, and highlighted the enrichment activities that students may choose from, and has shown some connections with our extracurricular options. This first one, arts, global communications and information systems. While working with the elementary specialists, Ms. Lucius has coordinated a series of Spark experiences unique to each grade level, including field trips like to Orchestra Hall and the Minneapolis Institute of Arts. At the middle school, the district career and college planning platform, Zello, is a part of every student's advisory time, and it follows them from grade six through graduation. In each of the four career pathways, the elementary advanced learning specialists focus on a unit of study for each grade level as part of their unique win-time service that they provide to identified students. In business, manage, and entrepreneurship, you see the advanced learning for entrepreneurship falls under grade four, and that's where they do that particular unit of study. These activities, and actually, two years ago, the board approved the return of some of the elementary extracurricular clubs and activities, and activities like peer leaders and student council provide students with the chance to develop their leadership and management skills. Grants secured at the middle level established the Green Team, an after-school club for students interested in environmental sustainability. There's many more, but... Under design, engineering, manufacturing technologies, there are some Spark experiences to take a look at. First is the VR field trip, this virtual reality field trip on which all fourth graders attended outside of the school district as part of their digital learning specialist And the adoption and development of a rigorous and STEM-based math curriculum, math expressions, which the board heard about at the last meeting. They adopted it this year. It sets the stage for continued implementation of the K-12 Next Generation Science standards. Middle school is in their second year of implementation of the Next Gen Science standards, and high school is moving forward with implementation next year. K-5 elementary science review kicks off this spring, and elementary and middle school clubs offer students chances to expand their understanding and participate in hands-on experiences that prepare them for more specialization in high school in areas of engineering and robotics. We continue to have a very robust project lead-the-way opportunities for students, not only as part of their core, but also allowing them to choose for electives in automation, robotics, and the green architecture. Health and Human Services, the Spark experiences that have been initiated this year include a return to the district track-and-field competition, and the continued implementation of Second Step, the district social-emotional curriculum for students in grades K through eight. The board's approval to provide extracurricular sports in the middle level has opened another opportunity for students to expand their own personal health and fitness journeys. The foundational skills and high-interest activities of middle school, family, and consumer science has led to outstanding growth in some of the specialized industry pathways at the high school, and I know that Dr. Funston will share a little bit more about those as we move forward. But this coordination between core instruction that happens as part of our basic rigorous curriculum, enrichment opportunities where students get to do those extra pieces outside of the walls of the school, as well as choose those as electives, and extracurriculars, where we added some of those to the elementary school, and we continue to expand those in the middle school, which may take the form of sporting events, it may take the form of clubs, it may also take just some special interest types of things that are facilitated by our staff. All of them are part of our K-12 pathways experience, and all of them are aligned to the four pathway, career pathways at our high school. This is a chance for us to continue to grow and expand those alignments and those opportunities for our students from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade.
So, we have so much to be proud of in our district, and I know that all of you have probably seen this issue, which highlighted our robotics team, number one in Minnesota, number 26 in the US, and number 40 worldwide. That is absolutely incredible. I got the chance to talk to some of the members of the robotics team and ask them, what is it that you want to do, and how is it that you even got interested in this? Their interest started in middle school with exactly what Director Aftedal was talking about. The opportunities that they had in Project Lead-the-Way classes and in the clubs after school that align with those interests and passions is what led them now into taking engineering classes at the high school, as well as, of course, being on the robotics team. Will Mo, one of the members, longstanding member of the robotics team, told me his plans is he is going to the University of Minnesota, and he will be majoring in mechanical engineering. So this is a young man. Our pathway model helps our students find purpose, passion, engagement, that can lead them to that future career, viable employment, and certainly wage, family wage earning potentials. Another thing that happened just last week during Culture Week at the high school was Decision Day, and this is where our seniors tell us, what are we going to be doing after high school? When I pulled the survey, there were 325 responses. There are more now, but I pulled it last week, at the end of last week. So at that point, 325 surveys were completed. Only 26 of those students did not have a response for what they were going to do after high school. Every other student knew exactly what they were going to be doing after high school, even for the 20-some-odd students who were going to be taking a gap year, and they could explain, this is what I plan to do during my gap year. Of all of those, and you can see, Ashley is one of them, the quote that you see here, there are 14 of our students who are choosing education as their future career. Ashley came to our district in elementary school as an EL student, and she learned English in our programs. She became interested in education and helping young children. She wants to go into elementary education. She is going to Concordia University, and she will be taking a $6,000 Grow Your Own Grant scholarship with her to help with her studies, and she will become a multilingual educator in the state of Minnesota and hopefully back in District 191. And then finally, our program is truly an example in the state. It's regionally an example, and it's also nationally an example. Recently, some of you may know, some of you were there, Dr. Amy Lloyd, who is the US Department of Education Assistant Secretary, visited our programs at the high school, our pathways. And right after that, she was also doing a keynote speech at the Jobs for the Future and Harvard University Symposium in Boston, Massachusetts. We got a text from one of our colleagues from the Greater Twin Cities United Way who was there. She did a shout-out for Burnsville School District and the programs that we are offering and the opportunities that we are offering to our students. And this is a conference that's attended by around 1,200 professionals across the country. U-Scienc is doing an article about our profile of a learner, and we are doing it differently than many other districts who do a type of a profile, and so they want to highlight the way that we are going about this work as an example of a really great way to do it. Minnesota Department of Education, just this week, interviewed Matt Deutsch and Dr. Battle around our education pathway, because they think that what we are doing is an example for the state, for any other school district who is currently offering a Grow Your Own program, or who wants to offer a Grow Your Own program. So that will be published very soon for our symposium, our education symposium, which is on May 17th, and then it will appear in an article this summer. And other districts continue to come to our district to find out, what is it that we do? Why are we successful? Why are we having the impacts that we are? And even last week, Mankato Public Schools came to our district to find out, how do you do this? We want to do it. Can you help us? So, as Dr. Aftedal said, we have our pathways. It's not so much that the pathways change. What changes are the content and the opportunities that are provided to students. And those change because our economic data tell us that we need to make adjustments in our programming and the courses that we offer, and student interest also guides some of the decisions that we make. We want them to be engaged. We want them to want to be in these programs. Highlighting just a few of our programs, in our culinary, we have gone from seven sections to 23 sections. That is huge growth. There are five teachers working in one culinary lab, and it's one classroom, and they are shifting their pans and pots and preparations. They are providing each other patience and grace in using the same lab and shifting so quickly. It's anyone who's been in the kitchen, if you're pivoting from desserts to main dishes in a period of four minutes, and you've got to get all of those, all of that prep work done, and it all ready to go, our teachers are just doing an outstanding job in working with this. Some of the new classes that are coming out, not only because they're desired, but because our students are asking for them too. We're going to be adding a baking course and also an allergen-friendly cooking. In our education, just spoke about that, we have six college credits from Metro State. Seven of our students will be receiving the $6,000 scholarship, and the $6,000 scholarship can only be awarded, we have more students going into education, but it can only be awarded to students who are going to an education program in a Pelsby-approved Minnesota college or university. So that's where we have a little constraint there. And 50% of our students in the pathway are students of color, and we are continually looking to increase that. And we have a grant waiting for a response, which would help us with that work of recruiting more students of color into the education pathway. Our fashion and design, we just about lost our fashion and design because of student interest, not because of demand in the workplace. And we have increased that from two sections to four sections, and we've done that because now we're incorporating digital technologies into this, digital illustrators, as far as the design component, which is fashion design and also interior designing. And we are also partnering with other classes. So our design students are partnering with the construction students. Houses have two parts to them. They're just not buildings, they also have interiors. And so we put both of those students together so that they can really see the full swath of what it takes. When we have even a room like this, it takes both of those to make it happen. And very proud of our automotive program. Our instructor has completed 30 hours of training and has completed eight very, very difficult assessments. He is now an ASE certified instructor, which is industry standard and industry demanded. We have revamped the courses in the automotive pathway, because these classes now need to be certified, and so that our students can be certified, and there is specific curricula around that because it is a national certification. So we are revamping and reimagining those automotive classes, and at the end of the month, we will have a team from the ASE certification group who will be visiting the automotive lab. They will be doing a fine-tooth comb over everything that's there, looking at the curriculum, looking at safety pieces, do we have the right documentation up on the wall, and talking with students so that we can get our final certification, and next year, we'll be offering that ASE certification to our students who are in the automotive program. And finally, next year, we will be putting in place a formal internship program. Our students want to go out, they are going out, we need to formalize this so that they will get credit for going out and working and gathering that, and gaining that experience, working with employers in the community, and we're very happy to finally put this piece in place, because I know, and I see Ava shaking her head, it's very much desired by the students, and I will tell you, it is very much desired by our businesses.
Four years ago, I sat before this board, and I asked for permission to move forward with pathways programming. The key elements of that request was to come back and offer rigorous coursework, reinstate and offerings for advanced learning, reallocate our resources and our programming to be more aligned with the pathways, and to create an equitable opportunities with increased access for our students. As we are doing this reflection four years later, and being within the pandemic as well, we have made tremendous amounts of progress in not only bringing in new pieces to the pathways program, but also trying to be as innovative as we possibly can with the resources and the assets that we already have in our district, recognizing the high-quality educators and the experience that they bring, the student agency and the requests and the interest that students are putting out in front and saying, hey, we want to know more about this, we want chances to explore, and to really take a look at our scheduling, our curriculum review process, all of those things that we currently have in place to leverage them in more innovative ways. So really wanting to put that forward as a reflection of where we have been over these last four years, and really excited about how we can look forward into the development and the continued innovation that we would have to create these equitable and innovative programming. So, thank you.
Oh.
I stole your thunder right out from under there.
Perfect lead-in. That was not practiced, by the way. And part of that real innovation is our AA degree that we will be implementing next year. When we started this, it started with a grant from the Minnesota Department of Education. I cannot thank Becky Ackerson, who is a counselor at the high school. She has done tremendous work on this. It is really through her understanding of that counseling role and what counselors do to help students prepare for college, and her relationships that she has developed with students at the high school, that I was really hoping for a core of 10 students to go into the AA. We have 50 students enrolled in the AA degree for next year. All of our students identify as either male or female. 31 of those are female, 19 are male. Six of our students are staying in the district because they were previously going to enroll in full-time PSEO. And one student has open enrolled into the district so far. I can also tell you that 53% of the students who are enrolled in the program are students of color, and our goal is to have the same demographic makeup of the AA degree as the demographic makeup of the high school. I also want to just share sincere appreciation, and it's not just because it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but sincere appreciation. There are 16 teachers at the high school who are either qualified or getting qualified, which means additional postgraduate courses that they are taking so that they can teach in this program. We are tapping the resources of our own staff, the talents of our staff, so that we can offer this program. In Burnsville High School, our students do not need to leave campus. They will have the support structures of the high school, they will have the opportunity to do all of their clubs and activities that they so love doing, and we are the only high school in the state of Minnesota that is offering this opportunity to high school students in this way. And I couldn't say it any better. These are comments from our students. Why are they excited? And this is only a sample of the comments of why these students are excited about this AA opportunity.
Thank you. Board members, are there comments and questions?
I have a question.
Director Word.
And this could have been discussed on a previous pathways presentation, maybe I missed it, but what does college and career exploration look like for K through 5?
So for K through 5, it's not necessarily the exploration for their own college and career pathways. Instead, it's making sure that we're providing them with examples of lots of different careers, and also making sure that we're providing curriculum materials that show students from all different demographics engaged in different types of careers. For example, we just purchased a set of books of women engineers, they're picture books for kindergarten first and first grade, that depict women in a variety of engineering, construction, and women of various races in those particular fields of construction and engineering. And so, really working to make sure that our curriculum is very representative, as well as broadening the idea of what careers could be.
Thanks for explaining that, because I was kind of like, what, how do you explore college and careers when you're in kindergarten? But that makes total sense, and I love that we're doing that, because it just gives them that much more opportunity to start even thinking about that kind of things when they're littles. So, thank you.
Director Word. Members of the board, I would also add the experiences in pre-K, when they have the different learning stations. There's different careers, and they try on all the different uniforms, so it really starts in pre-K.
And how many four-year-olds get asked, what do you want to be when you grow up? That happens a lot of the time. Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Director Masal?
Well, I just want to say I applaud this program and all the hard work that's going into it. It's actually great to hear that we're being an example for the state and also nationally, so it's a very exciting time to be in high school. I mean, I'm just looking at it, and you know, it's very exciting, and I'm looking forward to where this goes. Thank you.
Thanks. Director Connor?
I was also going to comment on that too, about the, I'm so proud of our district as a whole and our pathways, so thanks for that presentation.
Director Chester?
I really like the slides that take the four pathways from the high school that really define, because like, I remember being, you know, four years ago, saying, oh, we're going to have, we're going to do pathways pre-K through 12th grade, and it was like, hard to figure out, how do you articulate that for elementary school? And to actually now see these in that slide form, to see that progression is such a valuable tool. So, thank you.
Yeah, actually, seeing those slides as a student was really cool, and I think like more students should see those, if possible, in any way, because I just kind of like put it more into perspective, like all the opportunities we really do have, because sometimes the course catalog is, it's really long, and it's hard to synthesize, but those do a really nice job of that, so I think that'd be cool to have more students see that too.
Thank you. I think the work that Dr. Funston and Coordinator Rachel Lucius did in putting forth that representation really is eye-opening and helpful, especially, I love the part where they're beginning to make those connections to extracurriculars as well, and so, I agree, we need to share it more.
Director Aft?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Director Chester that the visual really just is a great snapshot, and Ava, I agree as well, that that visual is something I think that everybody can easily digest and kind of help figure out, okay, where is it that I want to go, and how do I want to spend my time? Just a couple questions. I think I know the answer to this, because I think the visual on the internships, it was limited to the slide that referenced culinary, education, fashion, and automotive. The internships are not just limited to those four.
The internships are available to any of our pathways courses.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. And then kind of talking about, you know, the path- And then kind of talking about, you know, the pathways that, you know, you discussed the fact that we were able to save the fashion and design pathway due to, you know, previously there was a lack of student interest and, you know, kind of reinvigorating that. Where there might be a pathway there where there is a lack of student interest, and I guess there are two parts to this, where there's appears to be a lack of student interest and yet there's high demand in the workforce. What are we doing to try to invigorate a pathway like that? And I see also at middle school, there's, you know, we have some, we have some opportunities there possibly to, you know, help make those connections for our students to what's going on at the high school. And obviously, we had also talked about, you know, connecting the high school students to the middle schoolers to help them understand. So, you know, what's being, you know, thought about in those terms?
So first, I want to say the answer is yes to all of the things that you've said is that middle school is a really great opportunity to share those experiences and to provide the visual or that direction so that students recognize that the electives that they take, the core classes that they're enrolled in, and how those can lead to some of those, some of those possible high-demand careers. I think also it's important for us to continue to provide experiences and let, you know, whether it's in fifth and sixth grade for students to see what those kinds of careers look like. And as Dr. Funston mentioned, too, to recognize those careers that also serve as those kind of pathways for family wealth attainment.
Right. And also, you know, thinking not just about the school year, you know, knowing that we also have summer programming and there's a lot of opportunity there. I'm sure we're also connecting our path, in fact, I know we're connecting our pathways to summer programming as well. Can you speak to that, too?
The partnership that we have with Community Ed is really strong, and I just want to compliment them as always trying to reach out and say, as we develop summer programming, how do we connect that to what's happening during the school year programming? Whether it's, you know, looking at literacy skills for students who might need an extra boost to, hey, how do we offer more coding for our students in the elementary summer school program? So all of those things, as they continue to reach out in the development of the work that they're doing. They also are really very strongly committed to providing those transition opportunities for our middle school students, very much like the eighth-grade STEM that not only offers a great STEM experience, but also offers the opportunity for students to earn credits as they transition from middle school to high school and enter high school already with those credits.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. This has been really great, as always. It's extremely humbling and proud and a proud moment to be part of this district when we hear these amazing updates about the great work that Pathways is doing and the opportunities we're providing for our students. So thank you for all the work that you and your teams are doing.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll receive a report about adult basic education from Susan Edmondson, ABE Program Coordinator and Students. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, and Directors of the Board. My name is Susan Edmondson. I am the Adult Basic Education Coordinator. I was a teacher in this program for 10 years before becoming the coordinator in 2021. And these are two of our wonderful ABE students.
I'm Jason.
And we're here tonight to share about our Burnsville School for Adults. So thank you for this opportunity. So ABE or Adult Basic Education is a part of 191 Community Education. We provide classes for adult students to further their language and academic skills. We have had a very busy year with over 1,000 students coming through our doors to take an ESL, which is English as a Second Language, GED, General Education Diploma, North Star Digital Literacy, which are Technology and Computer Skills, Citizenship, Paraprofessional Prep, and Pre-CNA or Certified Nursing Assistant classes. This year is a really good year. We have had over 84,000 student attendance hours, which is an all-time record program high for our school. I want to tell you a little bit about our programming. Because our ABE learners are busy adults who are juggling a lot of responsibilities, we try to provide as many flexible options as possible to make it possible for all students to attend class. So the way we do that is providing all of these flexible class options. After a year or so of full-distance learning during COVID, we learned that providing online learning options is really beneficial for our students. After surveying students and teachers, we restructured our program to include in-person, fully-online, hybrid, and high-flex class options for our students. Our current class schedule includes five high-flex classes, which means this teacher is teaching both to students in the classroom and online with the use of the Owl camera, which is what is pictured on the slide. We also have hybrid classes, which are scheduled during the day, with one day a week being online for everybody and the remaining days being in person. We also have fully-online morning and evening options for multi-level ESL classes and fully in-person evening options. We also have summer class opportunities. These online options would not have been possible without the support and advocacy of Tech, sorry, Technology Director Rachel Gorton and Community Ed Director Jason Sellers. Together, they made it possible to give our students access to their own district email addresses and access to district Chromebooks. 191 is truly a caring community. I want to take a moment to tell you a little bit about our very dedicated and impressive ABE students. The majority of our students are immigrants. Some come to our door just days after arriving in the country. We have students right now from 57 different countries, speaking 36 different languages. 39% of our students are Spanish-speaking and come from Central and South America. 28% of our students speak Somali. We also have students from Ukraine, Russia, China, Cambodia, Vietnam, Uzbekistan, and dozens of other countries around the world. Many of our adult learners are balancing busy lives along with jobs and families, all while trying to navigate a new country and a new life. 86% of our students have had some schooling outside the U.S., and 8% have had no formal schooling at all. So learning to read and write is a brand-new skill for them. 40% of our ABE students are also parents of children that attend schools in our district. So we try to schedule our class times to align with elementary start and end times. We currently have students who range in age from 17 all the way to 81 years of age. 90% of our students are students of color. So demographically, we have a very diverse student population, which is what makes them so wonderful. Something special, almost magical, happens when you put students from all over the world in one class to learn English together. Even with all their different languages, backgrounds, and experiences, students are able to connect and bond over a common desire to learn. Our classrooms are safe, they're warm and welcoming places where students have more in common than they do differences. They can focus on trying new things, understanding new words, getting to know each other, and achieving their goals. You'll get to hear from two of our students this evening. Two of the 191 core values we are most passionate about this year are caring community and student agency. One example of our caring community values is our use of student surveys that are completed twice a year that we use to guide all of our program decisions. As a result of the fall and spring surveys conducted this year, we now have an ABE hot beverage station, which is what students said they wanted more than anything else, more high-flexed online class options, and new summer class offerings like online English and business, or online citizenship and business English. We have 30-plus volunteers in our program who contribute greatly to our caring community. They are able to work one-on-one or in small groups with students to give them individualized help with academics and language practice, as well as helping students fill out job applications, naturalization forms, and creating resumes. I could tell you a great story about each of our volunteers, but the one I want to share with you right now is about Bruce Anderson. Bruce is a retired Hall of Famer, Burnsville High School math teacher and coach. He's been tutoring GED students with math for the past four years. This year, he started collaborating with the advanced ESL teacher Jill Bear. They are co-teaching a customized math lesson to students every week. Each of them gets to use their unique teaching styles to give students a better understanding of math concepts. This has been a resounding success. The students and their teacher and their volunteer absolutely love it. They've developed a hunger and passion for math. Thanks to the partnership between Bruce and Jill, over half the class has achieved math level gains this year. That means they grew a whole grade level in math skills. This is just one example of the impact volunteers have on our students. We are also big believers in student agency, and we want our learners to make personalized learning choices that allow them to pursue their passions. So right now, we offer two career pathway classes that include an educational assistant pathway and a CNA pathway. We also have a business English class that will help our students with job-seeking skills. Over the past six years, dozens of our paraprofessional students have been hired as EAs or program assistants in our district. It's such a joy to see former students working with the children in classrooms across the district. They accomplish their dreams, and they are now examples to all the younger generations they help shape. The picture on the slide is of five CNA students who just completed the CNA Skills Class at Dakota County Technical College after finishing their pre-CNA class with us. They were able to attend the class free of charge because of a Foundation 191 grant we received. Two of the students are taking their state CNA exams this month and will hopefully be added to our list of graduates. And with that, I now want to give our student speakers a chance to share about their experiences. Our first speaker is Socorro Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Socorro Martinez. I came to the United States when I was 13 years old in 1970. Because my mom was a single mother, I did not have the opportunity to attend school until now. I'm a student in three classes. I take English class with Jill, computer class with Mike, and math and spelling with Elizabeth. I really like to come to school to learn, and I enjoy coming to class. It is a very friendly atmosphere, and I love all my teachers and friends. I'm going to school to improve my English, and I want to earn my GED. It's great to see my classmates moving up to the next level because it encourages and motivates me more. I want to set a good example for my grandkids and show them that it is never too late to accomplish your dreams, and that anything is possible. If I can do it, they can do it.
Socorro is very impressive. She shared that she came to this country when she was 13, but she was unable to attend any school until now. And then our next student speaker is Mr. Jason Jay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to attend the school board meeting. I feel honored. I moved to the United States from China in June 2021, and I have been taking English classes since September 2021 until now. During these two years, I have also participated in CNA classes, various computer courses, paraprofessional classes, and the GED class. In the past two years, there are two things that impressed me the most about school. Firstly, the school provides us with a great opportunity to learn because the school not only provides teaching for various courses, but they also provide online learning options and evening classes. Secondly, the teachers are very patient, and they are particularly good at encouraging students. So with their help, I passed various computer tests and paraprofessional tests and GED, math, social studies, and science exams. For me, what I wanted to thank them for is that they are liberating my freedom because I believe being fluent in English will be true freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So Jason is also one test away from earning his GED, and he is a parapro graduate this year as well. And they are wonderful for volunteering to be here tonight. As a result of our flexible programming and class options, we have had the highest ever number of attendance hours and student numbers. This year, we are up 19% in attendance hours over our previous record that we set in 2019, 2020. And we are up 33% in attendance hours over last year. Last year, we enrolled 806 students, and this year, we enrolled 1,066 students. So our student numbers are up 32%. Our state and federal ABE funding is largely based on our attendance hours. There are about 40 ABE programs in the state, and on average, they are down 26% in hours this year over the 2019-2020 year that current state and federal funding is still based on. Because of COVID, they gave us a couple of years where attendance didn't count, but this is the first year it has counted since that year. So we are proud that we are one of the few ABE programs in the state who are experiencing growth this year and expect an increase in our state and federal funding next year. All of our ABE classes are centered around three sets of standards. We have academic standards, professional skill standards, and digital literacy standards. We teach using college and career readiness standards, which are literacy, writing, and math standards that students need in order to build a strong academic foundation. Each class also includes Transitions Integration Framework standards into their curriculum, which are professional or soft skills. These skills help prepare our adult students for interacting with others and solving problems. The third set of standards we focus on are the North Star Digital Literacy standards. We teach our students basic computer skills, how to use email, and how to use online platforms like Google Meet and Google Classroom. All of the standards being taught in our ABE classrooms help students gain the skills and confidence they need in order to reach their goals, whether it's attending college, earning a certification, or applying for a new job. We believe that literacy has the power to advance equity. We are proud that 47% of our students have made a grade-level literacy or math gain on our standardized state-required tests. This means that each of those students, which is almost half of all of our students, has increased an entire grade level in literacy or math just during this school year. We are also thrilled that over 66 North Star Digital Literacy certifications have been earned by our students this year. Examples of certifications include Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Basic Computer, and Google Docs. Students must demonstrate proficiency by passing the North Star assessment to earn a certification. We are fortunate to be able to collaborate with several local organizations in our community. These partnerships allow our students to further their career and educational opportunities. Our pre-CNA teacher works closely with the coordinator at DCTC to give students access to the state CNA curriculum and the hands-on skills training they need to complete their CNA certification. We have staff from Minnesota Health Fairview and Ebenezer Senior Living Facilities in Burnsville come and engage with our pre-CNA students. They talk about career opportunities and educate students on job duties and responsibilities. Our students also take field trips to tour local facilities and see their future jobs in action. So the picture of the school bus is the CNA students on that field trip. An education specialist from Wings Financial Credit Union in Apple Valley came to Diamond Head twice this year to teach the basics of finance class to all of our morning and evening ESL classes. We partner with Gertens Garden Center in Immagrove Heights by sending one of our ESL teachers to teach classes all summer to their seasonal employees. We partner with Career Force in Burnsville, which is the Workforce Development Center, by providing academic testing for all of their clients, and we provide ABE classes for those clients that need help improving their basic skills, as well as referring our students to them if they qualify for dislocated worker funding. The Metropolitan Council is working with some of our ESL students to have a collaborative conversation focusing on housing and ways that can be improved in the future. The ideas and insights of the students will be shared with city planners and governments to plan housing for years to come. They're actually coming out next week. They're actually coming out next week. Our amazing ABE students have accomplished many impressive achievements this year. Thirteen students have passed their United States Citizenship Test and are now official citizens. Thirty-four students have earned the sixty-six North Star Digital Literacy Certificate, certifying them in software and computer proficiency. Thirteen students are now published authors, with their work being published in the twenty twenty-three Journeys Anthology of Minnesota ABE Students. And with two additional students passing the test this week, a total of eight students have passed their parapro test, making them paraprofessional graduates and eligible to be hired as highly qualified education assistants. We have six CNA graduates so far this year, with a couple expected to pass next week. Seven students have attained new jobs due to new skills or certifications earned in class. And there are six students who have taken and passed at least one GED subject test, with two students who have passed all four of those subject tests and are now GED graduates. This concludes our report. The ABE team and I love what we do. We are very grateful for your support. Thank you so much for your time, and I invite you all to visit our Burnsville School for Adults Facebook page to see more pictures and learn more about our program.
Thank you, Susan. Board members, are there questions and comments? Director Miller?
Thank you, Chair Hume. First of all, I would like to just say thank you to Ms. Martinez and Mr. Sheng. We up here, while don't quite understand it, but we do appreciate the intensity it can be coming, speaking in front of us, and the preparation that probably went into it. So thank you very much. You did a wonderful job this evening. I'd also like to just acknowledge that this was an excellent presentation. I'm not sure that I recall in the number of years I've been here having one of these presentations. Maybe this information was buried inside of something else or whatever touched upon, but having this as an individual presentation was excellent. I think it really ground us back into the point of the fact that we serve an entire community here, and the people we are working for don't just stop existing in June of their eighteenth year, right? So I really do appreciate this. This is excellent. Thank you very, very much. I do have an inquiry, probably more, to be honest, for Mina, because given the preceding presentation about pathways and such, I'm just curious if there's some, and I saw pathways referenced briefly a couple of times in this presentation, but I'm wondering if there's continual cross, I hate the word, pollination opportunities between these programs. You know, we have adults with interest in things going on. You know, for instance, they could be, come in and be guests for an evening of culinary, you know, trouble to teach, or whatever, or nursing, they could be nursing subjects in a hospital environment, or do interviewing with our students that are learning management people, et cetera. So I'm wondering if we thought about that, or is that something we can keep working on?
I would absolutely love to have that conversation with Mina.
I do think that there's a lot of value to in connecting with our partners in the community and then connecting those opportunities with our adult students.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks. Others? Director Werke?
Yeah, I echo what Eric, Director Miller, said as well. Just very impressed that we have these opportunities for our adult learners. Socorro, I am very inspired by you, your story. I think you're never too old to learn, and I just think it's an amazing thing that you've been able to do. Very, very proud that you can do that. And, yeah. And Jason, thank you for sharing your story as well. I can't imagine what it would be like to come into a country and not know the language. So to have the tenacity and to be able to come and learn and stick with it and then be successful and get an education to where you can apply that here and have a job, I'm very impressed. So just, you know, concur with Director Miller that we have this available in our community, and it is a part of our bigger picture here. And even if we could have even some of our younger learners, like in elementary schools, somehow, you know, be integrated into the program and just, you know, have cross pollination like he was saying, I just think that's just a wonderful concept. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Others? Director Marsal?
Just the same thing, echoing. Thank you so much, Susan, for bringing this presentation. It was really eye-opening, and to Jason and Socorro, keep up the great work. This education, adult education, you know, I had family members and friends that used to go like a long time ago. It has come a long way. There's so many accomplishments that are listed in these slides, and it's really great to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others? No? All right. Oh, sorry, I missed you.
No, it's okay.
Director Chester?
I was gonna say that one of my joys every year at this time is attending the various graduations and having attended the ABE graduation ceremony several times. It's quite a highlight, and being able to see just the differentiation of accomplishments through ABE, whether it's, you know, the citizenship to have the group come up, and it's just a wonderful experience that I'm looking forward to.
Yes.
Joining you again. And you.
Thank you, Director Chester.
Yes. All right. Not to sound like a broken record, but thank you. Your work is so important, and it matters, and we're so appreciative for everything that you all are doing. And I was, during the presentation, I was thinking about our mission, you know, each student, future-ready, community-strong, and you are, your group is the epitome of that. We're talking each student. We're not talking just children. It's each student in our community is what makes us strong. So thank you for the great presentation. Thank you to our two extra, our special guest speakers, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Hume.
All right. That's great. I believe next we will have a report from Ava, our student board representative.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Wow, hard to follow that. It is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in May, so the high school kind of kicked that off at the beginning where, so May first, it was actually Decision Day, but that's kind of what the day revolved around for that Culture Week still. But we did make wonderful use of the patio space, and that, we had some information tables for all the affinity groups and also just some games out there to kind of get people to stroll out there and then check out all the affinity group tables. And then after school that day, they welcomed NAMI, which is the National Alliance of Mental Health, and so they gave a presentation about the intersection of race, trauma, and healing for us. And then the group, that group has also been welcomed by Burnsville Strong, but specifically for Culture Week, they focus more on the emphasis of culture, race, and mental health and how those are intertwined. So that was really interesting. And then Tuesday, the GSA, or the Gay Student Union, they held a lip sync battle, and that was after school in the E-Commons area. And then Wednesday, there was multiple events, so they had red, they were, everyone wore red, and that was to raise awareness about missing and murdered Indigenous women. And then they also had Native Food and Movie Night, and that was coupled with the ASA meeting after school. And then Thursday, it was a fun trivia day during lunch, and they had just a lot of, there was some music, and they gave out candy prizes, it was trying to just get people involved. And then they had an affinity group fashion show later that night, which went from seven to nine, and the fashion show fun carried on to the next day because that was kind of coined as the Culture Day. So everyone dressed up as, in their cultural attire, and they could enjoy the photo booth, and then the mariachi bands, which played through all the lunches, and that was so fun to hear all day. Honestly, I don't even say that sarcastically, seriously, it was so entertaining, and it was just a fun, it really ramped up everything in the lunchroom.
My son loved that also.
It seriously was very entertaining. Like, I was, as somebody who, I don't, I mean, that's not, for me, like, that's not usually something that I'm usually, you know, exposed to, and that was very, just fun to watch and see, and everyone enjoyed it, really. And then, yeah, the Culture Week kind of ended on Saturday with the South of the River Powwow, which they held in the gyms. And then later, that's, oh, I guess I'm gonna wait to get to that later. Our Asian Student Association was also excited about Heritage Month, and Vice President Lisa Guinness shared some of their plans that they have for the end of the month. So she spoke about how they've been looking forward to the month, the AAPI Heritage Month, because they've been planning a big celebration in the Maraz Center. And it's quite literally a culmination of the month's excitement as it takes place on the thirty-first. It'll begin in sixth and seventh hour, and then it'll kind of trail after school there. And they're gonna have a fashion show, various dance numbers, interviews, and then games during the concert. And then, yeah, a little after the Powwow on Saturday, students enjoy a rainy prom at the Landmark Center, and that started at eight, went till eleven. This year, it was nice because they did provide busing for students, and it was free for anyone who had a prom ticket, and that was nice, you know, saved some money on your parking, and you don't even have to deal with the parking aspect of it. And then Student Council, they had some hand in prom, but as Director Oftedall had mentioned, the district, the all-district track meet is gonna happen again this year for the fifth graders, so they're gonna be immersed in volunteering for that. And then also, the all-district eighth-grade dance is actually happening tomorrow at the high school, and I remember when we did that, that was super fun, and that just helps all the eighth graders get to know the people they're gonna be with next year. So that's, that'll be a good time. And then seniors picked up our caps and gowns today during lunch, and that's getting ready for graduation nineteen days away now. And on top of all that excitement, seniors will have the opportunity to participate in the senior graduation parade, and during that, seniors will get all gowned up and tour around their old elementary schools, and even if they're not from the district, they weren't here in elementary school, any senior can do that and go to any elementary school, tag along with a friend, whatever the case, it's open to any senior to do that. And then because May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, Burnsville Strong coordinated a Spirit Week, and that's gonna be for next week, and that's just showing support for anyone with mental illnesses, and all of our friends that we know struggle with those. And in April, Burnsville Strong also welcomed the NAMI group to give a presentation about mental health and to help us better understand how to support ourselves and others when needed. And the Spirit Week just entails wearing a different color each day, with the chosen colors often being synonymous with a certain illness. So for example, Monday, we've got, we're wearing purple to support anyone struggling with eating disorders. Tuesday is green, and that's just for ending the stigma around mental health. And then Wednesday, we've got yellow, and that's to support anyone struggling with depression or suicide. And then Thursday is teal, and that's for addictions and substance abuse. And Friday, where it's red for awareness around anxiety. And this will be a good way for students and staff to help discuss mental illness by hopefully reducing the stigma that usually surrounds them. And then lastly, our Burnsville Esports Team qualified for state. Just want to throw that in there. So five of our ten teams will be competing in their respective games at MOA in the state tournament. And also, next week on Wednesday, they've got the community scholarships for the seniors that'll be, will get awarded those, the seniors that qualified. So, yeah, that pretty much wraps up my report for tonight. I can't believe it's my last one. I really appreciate having the opportunity to share all my opinions and just get the opportunity to see what goes on, on the board. I really do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If I may, for just a second.
You may.
Just to tailor on what you said, tail on what you said. You're gonna head off this college, I understand, right? And you're gonna get started in a career and have lots of things to do and take care of, but I would suggest that if you enjoyed this in ten years or so down the road, you give a little consideration to yourself doing something like this, because our communities, all communities lack people with this interest, so thank you.
Way to plant that seed.
Snuck it in.
Go for it.
Just wanted to say thank you so much for participating in this. Your reports are always very informative, very thorough, and we appreciate you, and we're gonna miss you. And good luck.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we'll receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hume, and members of the board. As Ava pointed out, this is the time of year for celebrations. Graduation ceremonies are probably the biggest ones, but I wanted to share a couple of others that I'm proud to participate in each year. First, we held our annual retiree reception at Ames Center on Tuesday, May second. It is such a wonderful and important opportunity to thank those employees who are retiring or who have already retired this year. For me, it is a good chance to get to know those employees I haven't had the opportunity to meet previously and learn a little more about them, their reflections on their careers and their plans for the future. In all different kinds of roles, these retirees have made important contributions to public education and our community, some having dedicated their entire careers to 191 students and families. So I want to thank all of our retirees and give you best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. Second, on Saturday, as Ava shared, we proudly hosted the South of the River Powwow at Burnsville High School. The event welcomes families from several communities in the South Metro, but there's a special ceremony for District 191's graduating seniors. It is a special thing to be invited to witness a celebration by a different culture than your own. It's an opportunity to see the beauty and pride and community in what might be new ways for us. I'm so thankful to be able to see that and to feel the support of the Native community for our graduating students. Lastly, though there are many, many more celebrations, there's a celebration going on right now that unfortunately ended up being scheduled at the same time as this board meeting. Our avid graduates are being honored at Burnsville High School tonight. These are students who have been in the avid elective classes throughout high school, and many of them throughout middle school before that, who are just about to graduate from high school. They've done the work. They've learned the skills to be successful both in high school and beyond, and many will be the first in their family, such as I was, first-generation graduate to attend college. It's a ceremony that speaks to who we are as a district, pathfinders. We help students gain the skills and knowledge and experience they need to blaze their paths, and these avid graduates are doing just that. Congratulations to them and to all of our other graduates and to our retirees as you take the first steps on a new path in your lives. Lastly, tomorrow is Recognition of School Communications Day. I want to thank our wonderful communications team, Aaron Tinklinberg, Lisa Lake, and Matt Steichen. You beautifully tell the stories of our students, families, and staff. You provide accurate and understandable school communications to families. You maintain our positive social media presence, and you ensure our board and board committee meetings are broadcast. So I celebrate you. Tomorrow is National School Communications Day, and I thank you for all you do. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Do board members have any reports they wish to share this evening? Director Connor?
Part I was just gonna mention about Burnsville High School robotics team going to Houston. That's so awesome that they're ranked number one. Proud of that. Also, just to share that I went to the middle high school play, How to Save Your Friends While Finding a Treasure, that was very entertaining. It was comedic, and it, I had some really great scenes for a middle school, and it just had an interesting storyline. So that was really entertaining. And then also, I did also go to Little Mermaid last night. Awesome, awesome, awesome. As we already got a preview of it at State of the City, so yes, everyone, go see it. It's such a treat. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll be there Saturday night.
Me, too.
Anyone else have an update? No, not this evening? All right, then. We'll move on to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish- Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? All right, in that case, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And this concludes our regular board meeting. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn to a workshop about board priorities and board goals? Moved by Director Alt. Seconded by Director Miller. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The meeting adjourns at 7:39, and we'll take a five-minute break? Is that enough time, I think? Five minutes, and we'll adjourn to the workshop.
Actually, August is when you get the formal recommendation with the, um, so for next year, the proposed programming priorities and staffing retention protections. They tell you a little bit, uh, about the programming priorities. You heard the presentation for pathways. So some of those certifications that are required to teach some of those, um, industry, uh, courses require special certification. So for example, um, they talked about the culinary arts courses. And so, um, there's specialized instructors that have that, um, um, ability to offer those courses. Another one would be our concurrent courses, such as the Nursing Assistant, um, Advanced Auto. You heard a little bit about the automotive program. And so we are going for ASE certification. And so that would be an example of a staffing priority to make sure that we keep the staff that is able to offer those courses. Um, you heard mention about Project Lead the Way. So those are courses in computer science, engineering, biomedical science. Um, they have to meet, uh, the science, technology, engineering, and math goals. And so each year, um, we bring forward, um, the priorities and ask for your approval.
And the conversation tonight is regarding last year's, we're reviewing the pri- priorities.
So it was on the board planning document?
Right.
I think there were.
To discuss.
Questions to discuss.
Right.
I didn't have any questions beforehand. I'm not sure.
At the moment, the expectation is that there will not be changes for next year?
Um, yes.
Unless the board gives a different direction.
So, um, Stacy Sovine, our Executive Director of Admin Services, consults with, uh, Dr. Funston as well as the high school admin team to see if they are adding any, um, additional certification staffing needs. But as Dr. Funston shared, we changed the courses, but you still need the same staff member. So for example, in, uh, Culinary Arts, we're adding the bacon, baking and the allergen. You don't need a different certification for that.
Right.
So you're just changing the courses. You don't necessarily need a different staff member. So yes, it's, uh, going through that process, uh, you should expect to see the same ones in August. Registration is complete.
Yeah, just, so, so basically, in this review, this would be like the conversation of, so what I'm hearing is you and your team are, are not, when, when these come forward in August, there won't be any change recommended?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion in the book here is, is to, will be to apply to the 2324 school year, but it references the 2223 FTEs that were applied to.
Right.
I mean, I guess the reason it's in a board environment in a conversation like this is in theory, we could bring forward additional ideas or whatever, um, or potentially dispute.
Right.
Something that's in here.
Well, I think what's in Board Book is what was actually approved last, last.
It is, but if you look at it, it's actually the, it's halfway written for the next motion.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's in progress.
Well, the 2324 school year is the one we've already approved. So the, the one we approved this coming August would be for the 2425 school year.
Oh, right, okay, you're correct.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because the school year has already started.
Because the school year will have already started by August, or, the budget year will have already started by August.
Right, yes, all right.
So are there questions about the priorities that we previously approved or suggestions for the future? If not, this may be a short workshop.
Was the projection or recommendation coming forward that this will be somewhat similar? Yes, similar, okay. So like really no change?
Yeah.
Maybe the only question I'd have about that, Dr. Battle, is the last one, the TOSSAs. Those may not be, just point of clarification, that you, you may not have those be exactly the same. But that's okay.
Right, so usually dean positions are a year, Dr. Belmont, yeah. And so there, there will be new names. I don't know if that's the question, but yeah.
Well, it's, it's written here as, it's the exact FTEs that were previously for TOSSAs. You may or may not have the exact same depending on your needs when you reach that point.
Right.
So.
Yeah, good, there might be a change.
But the, but the FTE themselves would remain unchanged. The actual number of FTE would remain unchanged.
We know that.
Do we know that?
No, we're not adding any deans.
Not that you would add or subtract.
We might be moving, I don't know.
Or, or subtracting.
But regardless, that's just a, that's more of a clarification point. It doesn't have to be answered, to be honest.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this? Hearing none. Oh, is somebody going to say something?
No.
All right. I guess, do you have what you need to move forward with planning? And we'll get the, the new one in August, I suppose.
So then this will come forward as an action item if it is unchanged? If it's going to be changed, it would be a report?
Presumably, yes.
Okay.
But it can be a report on the same evening.
Yes.
Before we approve it.
It'll be an action item no matter what at some point.
Well, well, yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. But if it's unchanged, it just shows up as an action item.
That makes sense. So if there are changes, then we should build in a report or a workshop, yes. Yes. Okay. Moving on then, the other thing was to review our board goals from this year that is wrapping up and begin talking about potential board goals for the coming year. So what I thought we would do was start with getting feedback from people on how we think we did on meeting the four goals we had this year, three goals that we had this year. Um, as a reminder, the first goal was, by June of 2023, board members will understand and be able to articulate the district's work in being a culturally proficient school system. Um, goal two was supporting and leveraging new methods and original thinking to improve student outcomes. Um, and goal three was creating space and opportunity for each and every voice to be heard. And there's obviously more information under each of those, but that's the broad goal. So I thought we would just go through each goal and see what feedback people have about how we did this year. So the first goal was around cultural proficiency. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments on how we did?
Do we just speak out or?
Go, it's a workshop, so it's a little more informal.
Okay, so yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, that's always a work in progress, in my opinion. So there's always going to be ongoing room for improvement in that area, but I think we are on the right track.
I would agree. I mean, it is obviously an ongoing, and, you know, I would have no, no objection to applying it forward. I think as far as the measurements, we certainly, um, did well at achieving towards them. We, um, you know, we facilitated, uh, at least one or two workshops on the subject matter. We've, uh, had it part of internal conversations and such, so, yeah.
What I'm seeing on here, it says that we would receive information from cultural liaisons or other appropriate representatives from the school as part of school reports. And I don't recall receiving any reports from cultural liaisons.
I think they've been in attendance. I'm not sure they had an individual.
In one of the school reports, they were.
There was at least one school report that had.
Maybe I was gone.
They, they, they may not have had like an independent section or report or something.
They were part of, but they didn't have, they weren't exclusive, but you're right. Wasn't a big part of it, for sure. But I do remember at least one meeting where.
What's going on?
But.
There could be more.
Anna's mic. Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. I guess I would expect there to be more.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if I didn't even remember.
That is a good point. Well, and if it only happened once over the course of a year, is that enough? Even, even if it did happen.
Well, and it's just reflective of one singular school then, too. So I think in terms of consistency sake, I mean, I was going to call it the same thing. Um, that it, you know, a- as we set goals for next year and realize that we're still, you know, you never arrive, um, maybe it's something we can keep in intentionally. As we're, um, coaching schools to make presentations, we say this is something that the board expects a highlight of or some incorporation.
Definitely.
And also diversifying the presenters. Um, I appreciate hearing from the principals because they obviously are the, are the school leaders. Um, but to your point, Anna, you know, the cultural liaisons, you know, it's nice to hear from parents, from the students. You know, of course, there's a limit to how many people can sit at the, at the podium. Um, but just, you know, it would be nice to have a mixed group of people presenting, um, you know, different voices from the schools.
Since the cultural, um, liaisons represent the family and the students, and there's only three, four of them, three, two?
No.
Oh, really? Oh, that many now? Fuck, I'm stuck in somewhere where I read something about how many culture.
Maybe you're thinking about our, uh, community education, our community connectors. So we have Etika Antoviris, and we have Handi Daoud, then we have some in enrollment center.
Maybe, I don't know where I was thinking, but anyway, but yeah, well, that's great. Yeah, and we could just, we'll just pick some and hear from them, and that'd be great. I agree. I would like to hear that.
Thank you. So we had our facilitated retreat, and we just talked about cultural liaisons. Anything else around the cultural proficiency goal? I heard at least one, I think it was Eric, say, we may want to consider a similar goal for next year, which we'll get there, but.
I agree. I, I like having this particularly as goal one.
Yeah, well, and like Tony said at the beginning, it's, it's, it's a journey. Where, you know, even when you make progress, you're never going to be all the way where you would perhaps like to be. So I could see that continuing to always be a goal, perhaps.
Yep.
All right. The second goal was supporting and leveraging new methods and original thinking to improving student outcomes. And then there were some actions that there specifically around pathways, participating in a dedicated workshop to have a deep dive into the progress of pathways. Board members will receive reflections of pathways as part of school reports during the school board meetings. And board members will receive dashboard reports, which reflect the district's progress in meeting our pathways goals. So those are the measures of progress that we had articulated last year around this goal.
The presentation today was timely.
We've had others, but that wasn't particularly well timed, you're right. Definitely. And we had the retreat at the high school, yep, exactly.
I think, I think we did really well with the pathways reflection. I feel like I have a much better understanding of, of the pathways.
Especially those images.
The dashboard, though, have we gotten dashboard?
Remember, many of the indicators are the world's best workforce and achievement and integration. So every time you have a SPA report, that's the reports. So I don't think we were explicit in saying this is part of the dashboard. But remember, most of those metrics are the world's best workforce.
Dashboard is usually like, here's the, the one pager of.
Yeah.
And there's, there are more metrics in the dashboard that were present. I mean, I guess, yeah, world's best workforce definitely is a dashboard, but there's a whole lot more that was included in the dashboard. That's the stuff that I'm talking about.
So there are 24, and so you will get the progress in many different ways. So let's start with the two enrollment. So when you get the enrollment report, we had two metrics about retaining our cohort from grade to grade.
Yep.
And the other one is to capture our market share of the kindergarteners, because there will be less kindergarteners the next few years. The other metrics are the academic ones, the world's best workforce and achievement and integration. So you did receive a progress report, November, December on the ANI, because that's the budget that's due earlier than the rest of the budget. And then the SPA committees, you'll have the world's best workforce. You, last month, you had the graduation. Then the other metrics are about our students, families and staff members' experiences. So this is the baseline year. So Aaron will be sending a survey out to our staff members, also to our families. And then remember, we took six questions from the Minnesota Student Survey.
Yep.
And so that will also be given to students. Oh, we had a little report on the other metric for innovation and original thinking. And so annually, you'll get a report of the programs and departments, how they're utilizing innovation and critical thinking. And then we also have the hiring of diverse staff. So that'll be part of the staffing report that Stacy will give. I feel like I'm missing one other.
And I guess, I guess what I'm looking for is a dashboard where we can look over time to, you know, the data and do the comparative, do the comparison of our progress. Because I appreciate having the information in presentations, because of course, that's what we receive here. But to have a snapshot to look at, and I know it's a work in progress.
So tell you the little.
We just started it.
Yeah, this is the baseline. So after this year, we will actually collect all the data on those points. And then Aaron will tell you a little bit about how we're trying to get it into one snapshot.
Yep, and that's Director Alt, exactly what she said, that it's a work in progress.
Yep.
So we have sort of clearly defined and adopted the measurements that we're going to include in the dashboard. We haven't developed the look of what the dashboard will be, sort of that single page kind of snapshot, so you can see it all at one time. And then over time, how that'll look just yet, that'll be something we'll continue to work on. And then we'll have all of the numbers as we go through the summer, probably into the fall. And we can really start looking at the enrollment numbers and things like that as well, so.
And it might even have to be more than one page, depending.
That's a really big page.
Either that or I'm gonna have to get a new set of glasses.
One digital page.
Yeah, exactly.
It was interesting, the Consortium of State School Boards Association Conference that Director Conrard went to, I explicitly went to breakout sessions where they already had dashboards. And so I gave Aaron, remember the sample I gave you? They did get it. It was really tight. I think they had 26. It was a school district in Georgia. So I came back and gave it.
Well, I think when we've talked about the dashboard, it's not just for the board, but also for the community. Like I envisioned it being on the website, and it's great that all this information, I mean, you just went through a lengthy list of all the information that's been presented to us. But if I'm a member of the community, I'm not going to go through the minutes of 24 board meetings to try and find this and this and that. So it's really helpful. I think that's where the dashboard will be really helpful, is for community members that are also looking for that information.
Yeah, I completely agree about that. And not only to see how we're doing, but to see what we value, right? So it's all of the things that we value most, right in one spot.
Yeah.
I, I might be thinking probably a little more literal, because I mean, I hear about some of our measurements and such, but when I think of pathways, I think of the four career path interests. And so do we actually have reports of, of how we see the influence or impact of the actual career pathways themselves? You know, so to, to set goals or measures centered on that? Because if we're really out there saying, it's all about pathways, you know, but our measures are really about, are they, you know, workforce ready? Well, yes, but was that because of the pathway? Like where's, where's that connection?
That's a good point.
So Dr. Funston, I've had a conversation about that. And Aaron, you can chime in from our strategic roadmap steering committee. There are so many indicators for each pathway. And so the one that captured it all, it all is rigorous, two, rigorous coursework. So you will also, you can get the data about how many receive their full credit for the college and the school. So that's the University of Minnesota credit. Here, nationally, internationally, they're accepted. You know, AP, different colleges give different things based on the score, but also the graduation rate. And then maybe how many internships? So we're thinking that would be part of the pathways, because there's so many. So for her to give the number of certifications, very similar to what you had tonight from ABE, but there's so many. And so we're thinking the big two are rigorous coursework, graduation, and then you'll have the other ones such as credit attainment, avid, success of avid, 100% graduation. So that's even tied to the graduation data.
Well, and also, there's got to be consideration of representation of the student body and/or concentration of the, the uncharacteristic student, right? Like automotive, would be great to see more female students in automotive versus male. You know, that, that's an obvious one that pops, that comes to mind.
So the career and technical funding, the Carl Perkins, they have indicators and they want more students that aren't represented. So there's a whole set of indicators from just the Carl Perkins money for technical and career education. So yes, that's one example.
Or even pulling seniors as they graduate. What influence did the pathways have on choosing your major? Or, you know, did it help you choose your pathway? Because then that kind of connects a dot.
Yeah. Or how many students? The other thing, too, is, and this is kind of going into a, into the weeds, and then I'll stop, I promise. You know, the, the, the kids that are slipping into, through the cracks, how many kids didn't like only tried one or two pathway classes, right? By grade, right? Are we tracking those kids too and trying to connect with them? Because we know pathways are going to help them be more successful.
So we are data rich. And so another example, similar to what you just shared Kathy gave tonight of the senior survey, only 26 did not know exactly what they were going to do. So that's another example. So I think it's through conversation, there's so much data out there. We just need to hear from you and Kathy, other staff, they can incorporate it. But we have tons of data.
So that might be a good, a good workshop.
Aggregated, even the MCAs, I think there's 100 ways that Amina can share about the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments.
Workshop for us, when the time comes to, like, when you finally come up with. I, I don't know if that was the plan, but just a suggestion that when you finally come up with the final draft.
Present it here. Yep, I think that's a good idea.
I think this is a good goal, also like that first one, too. Be also keeping it, because we need to be, you know, student outcomes is our center, you know, our big thing. Not only for pathways, but you know, like things like the new, you know, in our curriculum, like Hegery and math expressions and all that stuff, you know, is stuff that is going to be saying something about our student outcome, and we need to be seeing that continuously, so.
I agree, because I think the presentations we had about those new curriculums, people were very hopeful and optimistic about the, the impacts. So I think we want to make sure that we're getting the results over time that we're expecting, if we're going to continue to investing in it.
And understanding the change, too. Like that was a great presentation to understand.
Before and after, that was.
The reality was like, okay, well, that, that's really good to know.
Definitely, definitely.
And then touching on our adult students, that we didn't want to forget them and that how their progress and their, their story, that was very interesting.
Yep.
Because you kind of forget about the adults, you just think about the kids.
That's why I appreciated having that presentation tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad you said what you said, Eric, because I was thinking, have we ever had ABE here before? I really don't know that we had.
Not like that, I don't think.
Not like that, for sure, right. So that was good. All right, anything else around that second goal? What I'm hearing so far is we like the goals that we had last, we might have evergreen goals here. Maybe adjust the measurements or something. The third goal was creating space and opportunity for each and every voice to be heard. And examples that we included were seek input from multiple voices that represent the full diversity of our communities in order to form our decisions and being transparent in our communication with the community. Love that phrase. And then measures of progress, where the board members will ensure members of the community have opportunities to provide input regarding district activities through community gatherings, surveys, et cetera. Board members will learn how information is getting to our families and staff, identify gaps, and have staff to work to resolve the gaps. And board members will understand which voices are represented in survey results, identify voices missing, and learn the plan to reach them. So a lot of this is how is input being brought to the board in a way that all voices are being represented? I feel like this is a good goal, but it might also be a goal that we have more work to do than perhaps, maybe a lot of them we have work to do, but.
Yeah, I think the third bullet point, I have a, I, I don't know that we accomplished that.
Which voices are represented in survey results?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, do we ask in all our surveys?
I, and I don't know how. I don't know, maybe, is this something that we can do?
That's a good question. I mean, if we get 30 responses to a survey or 40 responses to a survey, how representative of that is that to begin with, right?
Right.
But maybe that's where then other, what are other opportunities are there to get input? If we know that a pretty small number are responding to surveys.
So one way you get that is to have follow-up focus groups, and then you specifically target the missing voices that you think were in the survey. Aaron, did you have anything to add? So if you recall, during COVID, we launched the development of the strategic roadmap, and it was really important for us to hear from middle school families. And so we actually had some focus groups and in-person, someone at Zoom. Can you think of anything else? So to me, that would be one, you have a focus group to target the missing voices.
Yeah, I think we try to use structures that are in place already as well. So for instance, doing budget presentations at the family meetings that are held monthly by our Community Connections coordinators for Somali-speaking and Spanish-speaking families. And then when it is a special project, such as developing the profile of a learner or the strategic roadmap, we're very intentional about ensuring that people that we bring in and invite to participate in the process, when there's a bring-in portion, are representative of the entire community. So the profile of a learner, as that comes forward, you, the board, although the board may be involved in it as well, some board members may not see it directly, the input, they're not getting survey results or anything else like that, but it's baked into the process, because that is so key to making sure that the process is good and that we get a good result. Same for the strategic roadmap development, as we were doing that, all of the values development and, and review may have involved multiple, again, multiple ways of getting that input. So bringing people in to have conversations and be part of the development process, but also getting feedback online through different methods. I'm blanking on the name of the system that we used at that point in time, but again, just a way that people could provide input and then reflect on other people's input. And, and I'm blanking on what that was called. Thought Exchange.
Thought Exchange.
Was the name of that system, so.
Well, and I think the video for the, for the profile of a learner, given what a large undertaking that was, I really appreciated the video, however brief it was, to be able to see the people. You know, we didn't know what the conversations were, but just being able to see the people participating and get a sense of who was there, what they were doing, kind of some of the exchanges. That was kind of an interesting, just takeaway for me in terms of, oh, that's what part of the process looked like. Great.
Made it a little more real.
Made it a little more real, yeah. And like, because I understand, like, you guys are always doing that, but that just was just another piece of the puzzle.
Like you said, it's kind of baked into the process that way. So maybe it's not explicitly said that X number of people from this group gave input, but when we see those pictures or hear how, you know, which groups were being consulted, then that, I think that helps add to that context.
I would suggest that in the context of a board objective, this last bullet point is not, it's not really our responsibility to dissect the nature of the surveys and, and go at, you know, and say, okay, we're missing this element of representation, and we need to figure out a way to, we need to figure out a way to get that corrected. I think it's a matter of making sure that Aaron and his team understand that as an objective of this board. And then when the results come forward, we, we, you know, we question, are we making sure that, which is being represented? And, and if he says, well, we feel like it was good, but it wasn't quite good, well, what parts are missing? And then he can give us a plan to reach it the next time. That would be the context.
Right.
In that context, I believe the reports, surveys that we've received have been pretty, have had some substantial information about the, the population that was surveyed, so.
And you'll, you'll see actually in the Friday board update tomorrow, as Dr. Battle mentioned earlier, we're sending out surveys shortly, a family survey, end-of-the-year survey, and then a staff survey as well. And you'll see a little bit of information about how we're trying to make sure, with the family survey in particular, we're reaching families that traditionally are underrepresented or, or were not, that we haven't reached in the past as well as we should. And so it's definitely something that we're mindful of and, and want to do as, better than we have in the past and as well as we can on it.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question about that first bullet point. That one, board members will ensure members of the community have opportunities to provide input regarding district activities through community gatherings. So are there like community gatherings that the board will go to to like elicit, like just conversations and stuff? Or like, how is that?
I think typically it's more, it's our responsibility to make sure that they are happening more than, like, as Aaron said, they're baked. more than, like, as Aaron said, they're baked into the process.
Okay.
So Dr. Battle and her team and Aaron and his team are really making sure that those opportunities exist. Typically, typically board members don't go to those types of things, but I don't think there's anything preventing us from going.
More importantly, there's follow-up.
Right.
It's brought to this table that there was conversations and often we'll see that in the form of open-ended answers or some summarization of the topics that were brought forward or something like that.
Well, I think another example would be like the Met Cap meeting we had. I mean, there were several of us who attended it. And it was a community meeting to gather public input, you know? We attended different focus groups that when we were looking at, you know, re-doing our.
Changing the boundaries.
Changing the boundaries in the three schools that I know I attended like at least two or three.
Yeah, I think all of them kind of attended a couple.
Focus group things. So I think, I think, I think that's where.
There are certain times where that may happen, but.
But, but not influencing it, right? And then like listening, like little birds flying around.
Standing back.
Which was the awkward part that I remember from the school boundaries. And even in the early days when we, there were some community meetings around which schools may or may not get closed.
Right.
And it was really awkward being at some of those tables and people saying, don't close our school. So, yeah.
Just kind of floating around.
Director Marcell, were you asking about the board sponsoring a gathering out in the community? Because tonight you did just approve that retreat for June 15th. And if you recall from the first retreat, Christine Roblesky talked about that tool leading in the public square. That's exactly what it's about. How the board, it's not just the staff, because that's what management does, but the board. And there are some examples she will give you of how boards do that.
Okay.
So in fact, one of our neighbors, they actually had board meetings out in the community. They chose twice. So yes, so I didn't know if that's what you were asking about. It's not, am I correct?
I, that's, you know.
It wasn't about the staff.
Yeah, but it's good to hear.
That's what that tool was about, should be going to and stuff.
That's good.
I do think that, that this board does create a space for, for every voice because just like when I bought forth about the stipend and that I had talked to a few community people. And because I want them to be aware that, you know, we need diversity on the board and that, you know, election will be coming up in 2024. And, yeah, you know, I, people, some people can't stay on the board forever and, yeah. And so I did get input from them. So it was just kind of a small report, but I mean, at least you heard. You heard what some of them had to say. I didn't get specific on, but I did talk to like six different people in different, you know, aspects in life. Like I said, some had kids in school and some did not, like myself, so.
You bring up a good point, because one thing I was just kind of thinking about while you were saying it is, well, we may not like sponsor like
Right.
a full-on conference, community conversation. I mean, I guess we have listening sessions at every meeting, but you know what I mean? But what I will say is, you know, we do often get invited to things. You know, Jamie's weekly updates always include upcoming events that board members can go to. And I would definitely say those are great opportunities to have one-on-one conversations with small groups of individuals and learn and get input from them at those. So I think that's probably a great opportunity.
And then, yeah, and then bring it back to the board. If you think it's something that's valid, some valid points that they made. I can see how they feel because I, you know, I didn't know everyone felt the way they did. So I learned some things too.
Well, and also I think over time, as a board member, you want to connect with as many people as you can across the school district because it helps to keep you grounded in where the, where the families of the school district are. And, you know, the, the community, the businesses, the people who live here. So that whether it's an individual report that, that's brought forth or our decision-making, right? Like, I'm not here to make a decision for myself. I'm making, we're making a decision together for our school community. And so that's what I, you know, that's what we bring to our decisions. So anytime you have a chance to meet, you know, we're ambassadors. I think Scott, you brought that concept to the board is, you know, we're ambassadors to the community and we bring that back to, to our work, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think these are, I just brought this up in regards to the surveys and maybe not having enough participation or, you know, the, you know, the numbers that we want from our community. And I think, you know, families are in different walks of life and sometimes they don't even know this information. They may have a survey sitting in their email, but that parent may have not checked their email for a week and now it's past the time or, you know, something. So these community gatherings, you know, whether, you know, they come to us or we go to them and stuff, it's a great way to also, you know, just give them the information and tell them all the great things that are happening.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
I do that. Sometimes I even put brochures on my building with the other magazines we have of them and stuff. Like I, I put a notice up about the, about the play, about the Blue Mermaid. We had some, quite a few participants.
Very good. Just call you Ambassador Connor.
That's right.
All right. So that's, does anybody else have any other comments around that third goal from this past year?
It's part of our goal tonight to think about next year's goals, okay.
Yes. And to which I think we then, because in the board planning document, the idea is that we want to have goals drafted before Dr. Battle starts working on her goals.
Sure.
So that there, everything is in alignment.
Yeah.
And then we finalize the goals in June, according to that. So that's kind of the timeline, so. I don't think we, I mean, you know, I think if we could get to a point this evening where we feel pretty comfortable with the goals, maybe we, I don't want to, I do not want to have another workshop on the 25th. We've had a full night that night. But maybe with the first meeting in June, potentially, we could have another workshop to see where we are and maybe finalize the next year's goals.
Like the one time that we kind of crafted our goals in simultaneously with Dr. Battle so that we were kind of in sync of like, oh, we didn't even think of that as a goal. We could do that at the board level too, you know, so, or how does it complement one another?
In conjunction with each other, almost.
Yeah, I really, really liked that.
When did we approve your goals, do you remember?
I think they were drafted in June, I think, I remember June.
It's after my annual.
Right.
Yeah.
It's after that.
It's June, it's May 25th, right?
Yes, it's at the next meeting. Well, what I'm hearing for sure is the goal, the broad goals that we had last year, I think we would probably want to keep them pretty similar. Are there any additional? I mean, we may tweaks the actual measurements and such, but I think the broad goals seem to be pretty aligned. Are there any additional goals we may want to think about? And we don't have to make a final answer tonight because you're right, things may come up.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
With Dr. Battle or work on her goals.
Goals one and two make the most sense, but I'm not sure in terms of what else you build out for goal three.
Yeah.
That, you know, that could be a different goal possibly, you know? And I don't know if something comes out. I mean, our, I mean, our next retreat is June 15th, but like if, if some of the work we're doing and that might prompt a board call in work.
That's a good point.
Or hearing what Dr. Battle's drafting for her goals. If there's another goal that comes out of that.
The only thing I can suggest is, and I'm just pulling it up now, the strategic roadmap. Because that's kind of over everybody.
And we don't really have that in this year's goals. Explicitly.
Well, I think goals one and two.
I think one and two.
That's true.
Strategic roadmap.
I think so, yeah.
It's true. Doesn't use the words strategic roadmap, but it's definitely in there.
Well, and the third one too, each and every voice.
Yes, each and every voice.
Yeah, I, I.
I think the values.
Yeah. I mean.
Yep.
Everybody has that opportunity. I feel that everybody knows they have that opportunity, so.
Three is. Student outcomes is, yeah.
What about student outcomes?
Well done.
Are you talking to yourself?
I'm probably talking to myself.
It's okay.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, progress. Student outcomes. Too many tabs. Where did it go? Supporting and leveraging innovation to improve student outcomes and district culture. Oh, yeah. Cultural proficiency. Well, definitely the strategic directions. I think that's what, where we pulled from last time.
I think you're right.
We just shortened a little bit. Because the third one is each and every voice. Cultural proficiency is diverse and equitable education system. Student outcomes is number two. And then the last strategic direction was engaging our community to ensure common understanding of our strategic roadmap.
That sounds like a rephrased version of our actual goal. So. So we're on the right track, it sounds like.
It's just the bullet point.
I would argue to leave them. If I remember right, that conversation, I think the others were a little too quantifiable for, to put us at, I mean,
Yeah.
measurement of, we're not directly correlated to student outcome test results, for instance. I mean, that's, you can have a generalization, but it's a little hard to put it as a goal for us because we need goals that we can action upon directly, right?
Right, exactly.
And it is listed right at the top of your goals, strategic roadmap and the boundaries.
Yep. All right, excellent. Any other comments or feedback? All right, well, we'll continue on in a future meeting. We'll have a goals document for 2324. This is helpful. It may not look that much different. All right, anything else for this evening? If not, I think we are adjourned.